Let me first invite, let me first introduce our speaker on the stage. From the right-hand side to the left, Professor. Perhaps professors can introduce themselves. Richard, if you don't mind.
Si Dali from U University in Canada.
Rocky Tuan, University of Pittsburgh School of Medicine, Chair of the M Panel.
Bill Warwick, Stonyville University Engineering Panel.
Eddie Liu, Glasgow University Immunologist, Chairman of the CRF Panel.
Benjamin Watch of the RGC.
Jibo Chong, Chair of the Major Project Steering Committee.
Ronnie Shaw, Penn State, Chair of H Panel.
Louis Chan, University of Illinois, I'm the B Panel Chair and the Business Theme Convenor.
I'm Frank Tsang, I'm from the Innovation and Technology Commission.
Charles Ng from Hong Kong University of Science and Technology from SIF Engineering.
Vivian Yehm from Chemistry, University of Hong Kong.
Li Wenjiang from CHK School of Life Sciences.
Minjie Sam from HKST, Division of Life Science.
Ju Honglam from Hong Kong Polytechnic University in Chinese Culture.
James Huang from Jorgue Department, Hong Kong U.
Catherine McBride, Psychology Department, Chinese U.
Okay, thank you very much, and we are now open the floor to questions. Please raise your hand and a microphone will be brought to you. Before you ask the question, please indicate a person to whom the question is directed.
Yes, the PowerPoints will be made available. I think they will be put on our website for you to download after this meeting. Yes.
So, for the question for the chairman. Under the AOE and the TBR schemes, the funding is not allowed to be spent on more senior staff, for example, research assistant professors, so on. But in Hong Kong Union other universities, we have research track staff like researchers and professors, research associate professors and research professors, who in theory can be funded by soft money to focus on research. So, why does the, why does the RGC not allow AOE and TBR funding to be spent on those kind of staff?
I think the reason is that, like, we expect the university to be supporting them, and therefore, the money that we fund through the TBR and AOE would not be supporting those staff. I think that is a common understanding from the universities. Okay?
Any other questions?
Yes.
Just, I guess, a question for the chairman, the historian. I'm wondering if you have any suggestions for those of us who are historians as well, trying to apply for any of these fundings. Specifically, I have two things in mind. The first is, the proposal format tend to be sort of, you know, you have a hypothesis and then you have a methodology to prove or disprove the hypothesis. But we often, you know, have a question as historians, but we don't actually know what we might or might not find in the sources. So, how do we sort of navigate that? And the second, I guess, has to do with collaboration. What's, what's a sort of acceptable, quote-unquote, genuine collaboration output for historians on a historically oriented project? I'm just curious. Thank you.
I think the major challenge is to distinguish how, let's say, you would write up a plan for an international conference, where you want to answer a big question and you, as a single individual researcher, you can only answer a part of that question, you want to bring in colleagues. If you have something like this, I don't think it will really cut the mustard for collaboration. Because I think what the CRF scheme is looking for is already a way in which the different parts and the different researchers can come together in order to find the answer. You don't necessarily have to anticipate the results or different methodologies, but clearly, there has to be a higher degree of coordination than, I think, what humanists are used to. And I think most of us are individual researchers, and it's more difficult for us to organize this, because that is not part of our modus vivandi. Because the natural scientists, they go to laboratories, that is the usual way they use the collaboration. So, I think for humanists to succeed, it has to grow organically from existing research ties. And I cannot emphasize enough that it has to grow organically from people that you work with, people that you've known over a number of years, people you share research interest with, both within Hong Kong and also abroad. Only then, and then I think then you can go to the very specific advice that Professor McBrien, Professor Wang have given you in terms of presenting it in such a technically perfect way in order to convince the panel.
Yes.
I have a general question directed to RGC Chair and Chair of the Major Projects, and that is with the themes on the theme-based research, because the themes were set up about three, three or four years ago. And since that time, it's really only my, you know, subject to very minor amendments. And there's also a strategic steering committee on research themes, I think, under different organization. So, it seems there's no, no interaction between the two, and perhaps it's time, you know, these themes to be looked at. And the reason I say this is sometimes, right now, for example, sustainable environment, there are very specific topics. And given that usually it's a very broad panel and there's a lack of expertise in a specific area. So, sometimes, depending on how you look at it, the theme may be, the proposal may be very relevant to, to the broad theme of sustainable environment, and yet can be perceived to be not falling under the specific topics. So, I think this is a general comment.
Okay, so let me address that. I think that the theme areas have been in place for three years. However, the, in the theme-based research as different from the AOE, the theme-based research is top-down, meaning that it is driven by consultations from the EDB as to what are the important theme areas that are important for Hong Kong. So, that is from that, from, it was the, the theme areas were derived based on that motive. Now, as different from AOE, AOE is purely bottom-ups, which means that the areas were driven by individual curiosity-driven research. So, now, in the theme-based research, we have actually done revisions year, every year for the last three years. There are minor adjustments. We actually go to the each, all the eight institutions and ask them for suggestions and modifications. Then we submit them to EDB to see whether those modifications would be, would be accepted or not. Now, we are at, at the point of doing a consultations, a major consultations, to look at, in the next round, what would be the new theme areas. And this would be in place, this consultation is not finished yet. And this would be in place in 2015 at this point. And I can promise you that, that the new theme areas would be more encompassing, that it would allow, it would be more flexible in terms of what can be included in the theme areas.
Yeah, if I could say so. I don't mean, I mean, the theme is quite broad, you know, sustainable environment, for example. But I was referring to more like the topics under the theme, because there are few topics. And right now, my sense is actually the reviewers follow quite strictly these topics. And for, just for information, I sit on the panel for strategic, you know, this steering committee for, for research themes. And yet, we don't seem to hear from RGC. So, so I guess my question is, what's the role of the panel? If it's that panel who set the original themes, and yet actually doesn't get the feedback from RGC?
The feedback, I mean, what do you mean the feedback from the RGC? The theme areas were defined by the panel.
Yeah, I think the, the panel, I don't think the panel actually ever got feedback from RGC.
Yeah, I think that was the initial panel when it was set up. But at this point, the theme areas are in place. So, what, what do you mean the feedback from the RGC?
You know, in terms of the, the suggestion from this institution.
We don't suggest areas. I mean, the feedback is not from us, but from the institutions. The institutions give feedbacks on the theme areas and what to modify, and then we actually process them and we discuss them at the Major Project Steering Committee to accept them or not. Now, if, if there are total new changes to the areas, then usually those would not be allowed. But if there are just minor changes in the terms, in the wording, those are automatically accepted. So, that is the change that, I don't know whether that is considered as a feedback or not. But those, the feedbacks or changes are actually coming from you, not from us. Yes.
Thanks. I suppose this is a question for the chairman of the RGC and also for the Chairman of the Humanities and Social Sciences Panel. So, I'm based at the Hong Kong University of Humanities and Social Sciences here at Hong Kong U. And in conversation with colleagues, I mean, we're considering putting a bid for a CRF grant. And in conversation with colleagues, it turns out that if a team gets a collaborative grant, I, we understand, the university is supposed, is supposed to match the grant, right? And, and we're kind of thinking that, you know, given that universities in Hong Kong, I suppose worldwide, are not really, you know, living a climate of financial bonanza, right? It, it happens that in many cases, this may pose a serious problem for prospective applicants, right? Because they may get the grant, and then the university does not match the grant. So, I suppose the question is, what happens when this requirement is not met? Are there ways to overcome this requirement? And has the RGC ever considered, you know, eliminating this requirement altogether? Thanks.
As far as I know now, there is no more, maybe in the, in the beginning, there will be matching requirements, meaning that the university has sort of come up with certain amount of matching funds. But I think starting from last year or this year, the matching requirements has been lifted, meaning that there is no more matching support needed from the institution. Of course, the institution can always put in some matching money to show that there is support from the institution on, on, on your research. But that is totally optional at this point.
I think this, the equipment grant is.
The equipment, okay. For the equipment grant, it is slightly different. I think for the equipment grant, what the RGC is looking for is that there is sharing from the institution. Because like, I mean, that, in terms of buying a major piece of equipment, there is maintenance, there is possibly staffing, there is also in-kind support, for example, building up the space to house the equipment. All this can be taken as matching money to support the equipment. So, for the equipment, I think it is important that, because the equipment belongs to the, to the institution, and therefore, we would, in a way, to ask the institution to provide some matching, 50% of matching support. But other than that, I think for the TRS and the AOE and the CRF, there is no more matching requirements. Yeah.
Many of the speakers have, have.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Many of the speakers have stated that you're looking for innovativeness in the proposals. Historically, some of the greatest ideas, some of the most innovative ideas have always been overlooked. The telephone is an example, was overlooked at the beginning. So, my question is, in your granting process, what mechanisms have you incorporated to ensure that innovativeness is being recognized?
So, I think who can answer that?
I can, I can give it a step, all right? All right. I think the, the grants are being reviewed internationally and in the expert in the field. So, by and large, the innovativeness is quite obvious. Of course, you know, this, the system is not perfect, okay? And there would be times that you overlook. But I think by and large, now they're the science, I talk about science, but cannot talk about humanities partly, is that if you have some innovativeness, you have to have some sort of backing into it. Because otherwise, it can be a daydream.
Well, my question is, if you look at, you know, if you look at Apple Computer and you look at Facebook.
Yep.
And you look at who created these things.
Yep.
These are people that, you know, don't even have undergraduate degrees. So, this is, this is the issue, is that some of the really innovative ideas are coming from very young people. They're not coming from the most experienced. And so, if you're after innovation, my question again is, how are you, how are you ensuring that you have the ability to recognize innovative ideas? It's a very serious question.
Let, let me respond again. This example you quoting just now, they did not need any grant. They did not apply for any grant, all right?
Maybe they did and they were refused.
Precisely. No, I don't think they were. You see, the, we, let's face it, RGC is an organization mostly in the responsive mood, all right? We cannot instill in a school of innovativeness of the students and so on, or undergraduates. And we encouraged the innovative sort of idea, but we cannot, as some of our speakers say, induce you, tell you what is innovative. That is not innovative anymore.
No, I'm saying, but you're saying that if you're asking for innovative ideas, that you're stating that you have the ability to recognize it. Right? So, that's what my question is. How, how are you incorporating certain mechanisms in your decision process to recognize innovative ideas?
Well, unless other people have established it.
I, I think that here, we are talking about collaborative research, meaning that, that like, if you are looking at individual inventions or singly investigative research, that may be different. But in collaborative research, as what this forum is all about, we are looking at collaborations, evidence of collaborations. Innovation is an important element, but collaboration is another important component. So, to demonstrate the, when you write a proposal, you need to convince the reviewers that there is certain degree of innovations there. Now, how do you convince people that innovation? If you just come up with an idea, whether people would recognize it or not depends on how you create, how you convince them. That may be something difficult to do. Like, if you say, I, I want to invent Apple Computer or iPhone, you probably want to keep it secret. You don't want to disclose it in your proposal to people if you have something that is so innovative. I think that there is a difference between like, what we are, the mode of what we are doing in terms of proposals and reviewing proposals is probably not in the same line as looking at inventions. We are not talking about inventions. We are talking about, like, the, the, there is certain degree of inventions in the, in, in, innovations in inventions. But there is also a certain degree of innovations in collaborative research. I think that those two are different. I think what you are mentioning here is the innovations in inventions.
I think that, that is just an example.
Yeah, maybe I'll just add, I think, I think Ben and Eddie presented some very concrete illustration of, you know, what innovation means. Just to pose a counter-argument to what you just said, you can always find counterexamples, exceptions. But I think you could, you probably have to admit that a lot of important discoveries were supported by grants that I would say that, you know, is also considered innovative. They may not be necessarily your Apple Computer or Facebook, but many, many things that we enjoy on a daily basis come from, let's say, federally funded, government-funded projects, okay? So, and we don't, like I said, you can always find counterexamples and exceptions. So, that's number one. Number two is that we do build in an argument or a paradigm or a parameter which states high risk, high impact, right? Now, there will be things that are risky. It's like, okay, wow, this could be, you know, revolutionary or unusual, whatever. But if this works, if this works, what kind of impact would it have? So, innovation has to be tied to impact, right? Because it, I don't care how innovative it is, if it has no consequence whatsoever, or let's put it this way, if it just turns out to be untrue and there's still no consequence, then I don't know if, you know, the government should spend money on, on that. Either, you know, advancement of knowledge or improving the health of the, of the population or what have you, infrastructure of the city and whatever. So, I think, I think we do build in high risk, high impact as a parameter that we pay attention to. Can we cover all the innovative ideas? Probably not, right? We'll probably miss some. But I think we encourage innovation that has been presented in a way that's persuasive. I think if that's the case, that innovation will be supported.
Let me also add to that, that in terms of the RGC, which is different from venture capitalists in terms of supporting, I think when you come to anybody to, to describe your innovation, you are basically asking for financial support to carry out the work. Now, if the, if the work can be described in a proposal that can be disclosed to reviewers, that can be supported through the Research Grants Council or any funding agency. If the work of, if the innovation is, cannot be disclosed, then probably you should be looking for venture capitalists to, to support the work. So, this is, I think, the difference there. There are also other types of innovation that doesn't require support, like you can do it in a garage, then that would be something different. So, there are different types of innovation. All you're looking for is the funding support. And how, which agency to go for the funding support depends on the type of innovations that you're looking, that you are developing at this point. Yes.
Talking about collaborations, often though, we would like to have collaborations with the international researchers. And I just wonder what the position is for the RGC in terms of having, is it positive to have international collaborators? And can we use part of the budget to carry out some of the collaborative research overseas?
I, I think, let, let me try to answer that and, and the collab, we actually try to, and we actually encourage collaborations with international partners. The only restriction is that we cannot send money overseas to other countries to do the, to do the contract work over there. That is, we, it is, it, because like, there are restrictions on how much, what money can be spent over there. We can do certain, there are certain type of services that we can do overseas, like certain kind of test services that you can do. You can support travel of people coming to Hong Kong to do the work. But in a way, it would be difficult to subcontract a project to an overseas country and to support PIs overseas to do the work. So, I think in that case, then you're looking at collaborative research that you may have to write a proposal together with an overseas partner, getting money from an overseas agency, together with the joint support of RGC locally in Hong Kong and to do the work together. I know that it is not as convenient, but that's the, the limitations of what we have today in Hong Kong.
Chairman, may I say a few words about the Innovation Technology Fund?
Yeah, sure, of course. I think that it is possible for ITF.
It is possible. We, we have actually relaxed the restriction on funding overseas projects. And currently, all the ITF projects allows up to 50% of the project funded, the project cost to go overseas. Of course, that's subject to proper justification and reasonableness. So, it's not automatic, but it's possible.
I don't want to contradict the chairman. There is, there are always exceptions. Always exceptions. If you can show that there is one person out there in Iceland who can do that particular research, in order for this research to work, we have to work with that person. Yes, we can, I mean, but if, but obviously, it's subject to a lot of constraints. I mean, that person cannot consume 80% of budget, things of that nature. But it has to be a unique situation when that particular individual is the only reasonable person who can help in that particular research.
I, I think that is the same as the providing services on the work, that you could actually fund it in terms of the services that could be provided. Yes. Yes.
So, I'm, that's why I'm from Faculty of Medicine. So, I'm asking about the CRF equipment grant. So, as institution, you know, we are, the understanding is we have provide 50% of matching. And it is the first time I understand that, you know, the 50% doesn't mean 50% of the piece of equipment. So, I just want to clarify, you know, the RGC stand, you know, like, you know, would it be look favorable if you just provide a matching? Because on, on manpower, for example, because some of the big equipment actually need a long term. We have very successful example of establishing a core facility with a team of staff looking after it, which is a very huge investment for the institution. So, now, the problem we're faced with, if we want to establish such a big equipment, so to provide for matching of the 50% of the funding of the equipment together with the manpower is a lot of, you know, it's a big commitment and we have to make choice all the time. So, I just want to get a bit more clear feeling of, you know, whether the RGC, you know, favor or prefer, you know, like, we support half of the equipment itself or, you know, if we provide the funding for, you know, sustaining the core is good enough.
I don't think there is any preference in terms of how the matching would be provided. If I, I, I think that the matching, as long as it is 50% and it is reasonable cost in terms of the support of the equipment, the running of the equipment, maintenance, the staffing, and so on, you don't have to provide 50% of the cost of the equipment to, to qualify. I, I think that's, that's my understanding.
I think it's a total package.
The total package, exactly, the total package. So, you have to define a total package as like, the, the cost acquisition of the equipment, supporting it, the staffing, and, and, and so on. Okay?
Just to follow up the question, and the collaborate partners. Is any preference of international collaboration, inter-institutional, local institutions or intra-institution, intra-faculty? Any preferences of collaboration? Or, or any collaboration will be equally treated?
I, I think that, let me first answer that and then, the, the, we have actually loosened up in terms of the collaborative, collaboration requirement for the CRF. For the team-based research and the AOE, it would still require, I think it would be almost essential that it is across the institutions, that it would be good to show the support. Because unless the particular institution has the own, is the only expert in the area, which may be sometimes hard to justify. In the CRF, we have loosened up the collaboration requirement that now the collaborations can be within the same department, within the faculty, within the university, across the universities, or even with overseas partners. So, I think that, that we have tried to loosen up that, that requirement at this point.
I think the major thing is that you have to justify the case if you have to, well, the, the overseas collaboration, okay? I think the CRF or any other, CRF particularly, was to formulate to encourage collaboration within Hong Kong. That's a proper principle. As Professor Wang said, you know, it's been loosened up. So, I would not too worry about if you really need international collaboration that you should worry about it.
Let me just add to that. I, I have read many such proposals in which international collaborators were added to impress the, the, the panel. And more often than not, because those themes are just added to impress rather than really collaborate, they will backfire.
Perhaps the last three questions? Any more questions?
Yes.
Jui Chen from Faculty of Medicine, Hong Kong U. Based on my understanding, the CRF really encouraged the inclusion of young investigators. So, when we submit the proposal, we include some of the postdoc as co-investigator. So, when we got the funding, actually, there's a line saying, if you already have their name in the proposal, then the money cannot be used to support those postdocs. Causing a lot of trouble for us to, you know, use the money and properly. Can the chairman give us some advice?
Whoever is the, the investigators, we expect those are supported by the university. I think there was a question raised earlier that, that we cannot support the research assistant professor if they are named in the proposal. I think that you can propose staffing costs, for example, to support postdocs in your budget. But if you want to include the name of the person in the proposal as a, as a, as a COI or as a COPI, then that, we expect that person to be supported by the university already. I think that, that is what, what.
Let me, did you say that somebody told you to include postdocs as a COI?
Try to encourage some of the young investigator to be properly developed, right? In a way to encourage postdoc as part of the collaborators in our project. In a way to encourage postdoc as part of the collaborators in our project. But end up the money we cannot use to support those postdocs afterwards.
All right. Any other question? Any other questions?
Let me just ask a simple question. The CRF is a new thing, but what was the past success rate? And are you satisfied with the success rate and the standard of the applications and so on?
You mean in terms of CRF or?
CRF, please.
Oh, okay.
CRF started about, what, 10 years ago? Right? And if you look through the record, average out the success rate so far, it's been about 20%, which I think internationally is very favored, compared, favored internationally. And then the, this year, of course, we have a new scheme, and we opened a floodgate. So we have more than double the usual number. So you would expect the success rate would be lower, although we have more money this year. So we cannot predict what's the success rate, depend very much on the level, the standard of application. But historically, it's 20%, and I'm comfortable with it. Now, you probably know, the NIH and so on is operating 10%, and the MRC is about similar. So when you have GRF success rate, 30%, that is luxurious by international standard. I know some of you are not, do not agree with me, but I think if you look further field, that is luxurious, okay? And then, the CRF is 20%, that I think is justifiable at this level. And then the AOE, AOE and TRS, that's about 10% or less sometime. That again is correct, because we are looking, really picking up a different level, okay?
Let me add to the situation this year. We received, I think, over all 155 proposals, pre-proposals, in the, in the CRF call for proposals. But not all of them would go into the full proposal stage. So by the time it goes to call for the full proposals, and by the time that the reviews would be done, we still would expect to have 20% success rate for those going into the full proposal stage. So don't be discouraged that it is going to become 10% or 5% for the CRF.
All right, so the last question? Well, if not, perhaps, before we come to an end, perhaps we could invite our professor, our chairman, Professor Benjamin, to say a few words to us.
Well, I think that I'd like to thank everybody for coming to this meeting, this, hopefully that you have gained some useful information in, today. And I think that RGC is very much into collaborations. When we started on the AOE scheme many years ago, there was only $80 million. But today, this, we are looking at like $80 million for the AOE, $200 million for the TRS, and then another $110 million for the CRF. Altogether, we are looking at the amount of money which we put into the collaborative research versus the single investigative research is a ratio of 1 to 2. So this is, we feel that at this point, it is actually quite a comfortable ratio, which means that we are encouraging very much in terms of collaborative research. Collaboration has no boundary, and from the statistics we have shown, or we have, we know, oftentimes collaborative research carry higher impact, meaning that like this can be justified by looking at, for example, citations or other kinds of metrics, that you will see that collaborative research usually would carry high impact. So this is, again, a message that I want to give to everybody, that it is important that we would continue to support collaborative research in addition to single investigative research. So with that, I hope that we, we would conclude today's meeting, and thank you all for coming today.
Thank you.[1776.21]